Hey, Ophelia.
You know, squared way.
Well, have you heard any more of them?
I've heard.
Got it?
Just don't let anybody say somebody come down here and do that.
Yeah, I heard that. It was probably Tim and Liz. I guess I'm trying to get them to get some information.
At this time, I'd like to call this, uh, meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please, uh, join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, East December, uh, the Board of Education reorganizes, uh, leadership. Um, and at this time, uh, in order to conduct that business, um, I'd like to ask, uh, the board, uh, to make, uh, recommendations or nominations for the Chair of the Board of Education for the coming year.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate, uh, Lee Smith for, uh, the Chair of the School Board.
I'll second that motion. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Akonosho, uh, and for the second, uh, Ms. Sharp. Um, Dr. Lynn Smith's name has been put up for nomination for Chair of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, uh, at this point, um, I will ask, I will, uh, declare that the nomination portion of this is closed. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask for a show or an aye, uh, for all of those in support of Dr. Smith as Chairman of the Board of Education. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the motion carries unanimously, and, uh, I will turn the gavel over to Dr. Smith.
Well, I, I, I certainly, um, well, I, I think I appreciate that vote. Uh, I do indeed appreciate that vote, uh, and, and I, I look forward to serving as your Chair for another year. But in doing so, I have to recognize and applaud the role of every member of this board and the hard work that you do in support of the Superintendent and providing the finest educational offerings that we can provide for our children. So, kudos to the board. Uh, it's a pleasure working for you, and I look forward to another good year. Having said that, uh, I'll now, uh, open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion to nominate, uh, Mr. Mark Akonosho as, uh, Vice Chair.
Mr. Akonosho has been nominated for Vice Chair as their second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there further nominations? Hearing done, all, uh, in favor of, uh, of Mr. Akonosho for serving as Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign against. Mr. Chair, Mr. Akonosho is, uh, our Chair, and congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I just, uh, appreciate, uh, the opportunity that we have to serve you. We are, we are equal, just have, uh, some of us to be Chair, Vice Chair, to take the heat for the community. And, uh, I just, uh, enjoy working with, uh, with, uh, the Chair and the Superintendent to make sure that, uh, whatever we do, we do it as a, as a unit and as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akonosho, and now I'd like to share our mission statement. Uh, Lee County Schools will teach each student the social and academic skills needed to become a responsible, productive citizen. And I would also like to continue with a code of ethics for those of us who are board members. Uh, the board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matter concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation, misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and we must avoid making confidential information public.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, were there no public comments?
You're correct, there are no public comments. Thank you. Before I ask for a motion concerning the agenda, I would like to make two changes. Uh, first of all, uh, I would like to move an item which was listed under Chairman's Report, which is the North Carolina School Board Legislative Committee, uh, from the Chairman's Report to New Business, so that will become item number three under New Business. And one additional, uh, change, we need to add a second, uh, closed session, session for the purpose of the Superintendent's informal evaluation. So, that will become, uh, the second, uh, closed session item. With those, with those two changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda of December eighth, two thousand and fifteen with the changes that were mentioned.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The agenda is approved, thank you. At this point, I'd like, uh, a motion to approve the minutes from November tenth, November the sixteenth, and November the twenty-third.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from eleven-ten, two thousand and fifteen, eleven-sixteen, two thousand and fifteen, and eleven-twenty-three, two thousand and fifteen.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved. Uh, I only have one item under Chairman's Report, and since, uh, December is the month that we reorganize, uh, that means, uh, if we so choose, we can also reorganize our committee structure, so I will be talking to each of you, uh, in, in the coming, uh, days, uh, to, uh, get your feeling on our committee structure and, uh, implement any changes that you may see fit. So, that will be coming up. And now, uh, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Dr. Bryan for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Um, uh, first item on our, uh, report tonight for, uh, Superintendent's Report, uh, Superintendent's Extra Effort Award, uh, we give this out every month. Unfortunately, the person that we're going to give it to tonight is a little under the weather, so we're going to have to, uh, go to next month, so we will have two in January. Always nice when you have two. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask, also ask, uh, Dr. Atkinson to come forward, uh, for the Clean School of the Month Award.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's always a pleasure to come up and, uh, brag on our custodial staff at the schools that we have out that are working to keeping our schools clean. In your report, you did see that we have all of our schools scored ninety or above, and seven of the schools scored ninety-six or above. So, again, we're proud of all of our schools, but at this time, I would like to, uh, award the Clean School of the Month Award for November to Sand Lee Middle School. But I asked Ms. Petches to give the.
Thank you so much, we appreciate, um, this award, and, um, we're gonna, I already heard from my custodians, and I'm sorry that no one else could be here today, but I'm very proud to have Nick Zachley, and he's in charge of our eight, excuse me, the seventh grade wing of our school is here to represent us tonight, but, um, I want to say how much I appreciate Dr. Atkinson's maintenance team. Um, every time we ask for any help, um, need assistance on anything, something's not working, whatever, that's all part of what our custodians do as well, and they are amazing. Um, my team at Sand Lee works extremely hard, in fact, um, one of our, um, central office employees was just, um, in our building last week and said how she could not believe how hard these people are working all day long, and that's how they keep our schools safe and, um, and ready for our children every day, and I appreciate all that they do. Thank you all so much for what you do, and thank you again, Dr. Atkinson, for, um, making sure that we have what we need to make sure that our building is clean, safe, and secure.
Uh, congratulations again to Sand Lee Middle School, uh, great job. Uh, final part of my report, uh, tonight, Dr. Smith, uh, involves accountability update, um, going back, uh, a couple of months to updating everyone on accountability, uh, testing, et cetera. I, I thought tonight's report would be a great opportunity for our lead teachers at the secondary level, uh, to share some of what they've been doing. Um, I, I think we're, um, very fortunate to have an article, um, about a week and a half ago, uh, in the newspaper regarding lead teachers. Uh, Zach did a great job with that, and, uh, thought tonight they'd come in and, and fill in maybe a little bit more detail about what they've been doing and their efforts throughout the district, so, um, they are under the, uh, very capable and dedicated leadership of, uh, Carol Chapel, who's sitting in the back there. Uh, and, uh, Carol works tirelessly, tirelessly with them to, uh, to support their efforts, um, along with lots of other, uh, directors and principals and teachers throughout the district. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Joanna Perkins, Susan Davis, and David Mintz to please come forward, uh, for a brief presentation about some of the work they've been doing.
Hello, um, I am Susan Davis, and I am the secondary math lead teacher, and I started off in education in Carteret County and came to Lee County twenty-one years ago, and, um, very happy that I have. The next, um, lead teacher is Joanna Perkins, and she is our secondary English Language Arts teacher, and she came to us, um, by way of New York City Public Schools and has been in Lee County for five years. And our science lead teacher is David Mincy, and he has worked at a few community college, um, level, he has worked in Carteret County as well, um, but has come to us from Craven County, and he started in October. Our focus as lead teachers is to enhance the quality of learning and authentic work. We are a support and a resource to all secondary teachers. We have excellent teachers in this county, and throughout our slides, we have a few slides, and throughout our slides, you're going to notice the background pictures. The background pictures are actual pictures taken in Lee County classrooms this semester. This one here came out of a, um, sixth grade math classroom, and the teacher changed her classroom, she transformed it into a coordinate plane. She was focused on the standards, um, that incorporate graphing, writing, and reading ordered pairs, and as her students were working through different activities that day, they then had the opportunity, as they finished each one, to come up in the middle of the floor and choose, stand at their ordered pair that they choose, and they played Battleship. So, they tried to sink her Battleship. So, obviously, it was a hundred percent engaging in that classroom, and it was a great way for me to see the standards-based learning going on and the enrichment piece that she added. Now, Dr. Bryan has asked us to shed some light on two of our major shared goals that we have and the strategies, um, that we are putting in place as interant, um, secondary schools' lead teachers in math, language arts, and science.
Good evening. My job here is to talk about how one of our goals is to enhance student learning, and so we do that basically with five strategies. The first is there's been an increase in online and print resources that have been given to the teachers. We work with the teachers in their classrooms, outside their classrooms, but our focus is oriented with the teachers. In, in that realm, we are involved in coaching the teachers, so we provide a coaching experience for the teachers if they need some ideas, uh, some help with a particular lesson, if there's a classroom management issue they might want some input on, we help provide those resources for them. We also do model lessons, so there's an opportunity for some team teaching, and, or provide some model lessons on a particular, uh, topic if there is one that that teacher may feel a little uncertain about, we are there to provide those resources and provide that example for those. We participate in what's called PLC planning. A PLC is a professional learning community, that's one of, that's what that refers to. These are held either on school level, or they're also held just within, uh, grade levels. So, for instance, I was at a PLC for Lee County High School that meets on Monday afternoons from three o'clock to four o'clock every Monday. Or then I might go over to a middle school, and theirs meets at a different time, different day, or it might be an entire school PLC, as in today, there was one at Sand Lee, uh, Middle School for the entire Science Department. So, sometimes it's a school-wide professional learning community, sometimes it is a, uh, individual team or grade-level professional learning community. And then the final thing we do is we offer professional development. We have recently brought in some different programs, the one being, uh, with McGraw-Hill, who's providing us with some, we have purchased some textbooks from them. They also have online resources with McGraw-Hill, and we have provided some professional development to the teachers in support of what McGraw-Hill also provided, to make sure that they can use those resources. In addition, uh, one of the things we're doing is an assessment called Case Twenty-One, it's actually through Mastery Connect, and the teachers also have been provided some professional development on how to incorporate that program into their assessment strategy. So, we provide those five resources as how we try to enhance the, uh, learning that's going on in the school.
Hi, everyone, I'm Joanna Perkins, and I'm gonna play with this so you can see all the words here. As the English teacher, the words are important to me, so, there's this part. And the first goal is enhance the quality of student learning by supporting all schools, and then I'm gonna talk about this next part. And if it will come, then I'll leave it up. Okay. And before I move on, I'll just draw attention to the pictures there. Um, we have a blended learning approach, so you can see a student here working with his textbook and then also looking on the computer, and this is a student engaged in an interactive notebook protocol, so he's actually taking notes, um, the teachers are modeling how to organize the notes, and then they're putting it in there, and they've got a table of contents plus learning logs in the back, and it's just a way to keep them organized and taking their own authentic notes, which leads me to the next goal. And that next goal is talking about enhancing authentic work via high expectations for all. So, first of all, someone coming out of the classroom and into this role, I want to say I'm really thankful and humbled for the opportunity to serve more students in this role and work alongside, um, great colleagues offering support as the lead teacher for English Language Arts. Um, I entered education after working in the private sector, so one thing, as far as these goals and strategies are concerned, they're definitely shared goals and strategies and things that we have seen as patterns of practice that we just want to continue to enhance. So, in school improvement team goals, you'll see a lot of the same, um, common language echoed, and that's something that's really important to us, that, that's another way that we show support is through common language, what's going on in the building level, we're backing that up, um, as well as under the leadership from Central Office. So, both of these goals, enhancing quality of student learning and authentic work, are shared goals beyond just us, with building leaders, district supports, like the beginning teacher program, um, the building leaders, instructional technology, special programs, and the central office staff. So, together with all state cordials, including you all as the Board of Education, we really believe in the vision that you guys have set forth, um, and we're here to help engaging everyone in those high expectations. So, how is that going to happen? The first thing that you've heard a lot about is alignment and adherence to the curriculum standards in order to promote equity. So, really unpacking standards with teachers, especially English Language Arts, and helping them understand the entire standard and how we're really teaching that in our objectives, and aligning the questions that we're using every day in the classroom, and we do that through coaching, we've got to be there a lot to see what's really going on, um, to what's going to come out in the assessment and their authentic work piece. So, in English Language Arts, for example, big emphasis has been on writing, um, project-based learning. So, you'll see that we're focusing on inquiry via higher-order thinking questions and skills embedded in lessons, um, encouraging the application of knowledge, so writing and reading across the curriculum, we're really thankful we've got Dr. Warren as Director of Secondary Literacy to help with that goal, but that's something that we're seeing in all of our roles, math, science, and language arts, that we've, we've really got to help, um, encourage teachers, it's not easy to do this way, project-based learning is easier said than done, so we're there as that other layer of support, performance tasks, um, and just that application. The other thing you'll hear a lot about, sort of a buzzword, um, around education and other, um, sectors, the idea of growth mindset and continuous improvement, that's really the PLC model, that our work's never done, we're constantly improving, so whatever this goal is, we can continue on with it, um, because there can always be more. So, this is just a follow-up story, um, and it's kind of apropos, because we sort of serve as cheerleaders in our role, and this is a, uh, Lee County Schools graduate from the class of two thousand and fifteen. She was a national speaker and a student leader in Lee County Schools, and, um, now she is a Golden Door Scholar at Davidson College and a cheerleader. And stories like her are the reasons that we're just going after this more than a diploma vision that you guys have set forth, but if you just took into account statistics and projections, this picture should not exist. So many people are to thank for her success story and the success story of thousands of Lee County students. Um, there are a lot of unsung stories out there, I can go back through and show you some of the other kids pictured here, but in our role as lead teachers, we're committed to being cheerleaders for the hard work that everyone's putting forth in schools every day, from the classroom level, custodians, it really does take that village. So, um, the bottom line, we know their strengths, we know that there's room for growth, there will always be room for growth in a continuous improvement model, that's education, it's never done. But if education is economic development, we have to help our students achieve the scores, the skills, and the experiences they need to be globally competitive, specifically in literacy, math, and science. And that's curriculum integration model, those type of things, we're getting there, um, but we're kind of going back to those basic goals, following up with strategies and going deeper each and every day. We've seen a lot of improvement and a lot of just excitement and, um, willing to try new things, so it's been really exciting, and we know that more than diplomas is about future-ready graduates. Um, we have the slides for you, and just, and to transition this last picture, um, some of you are actually there at Convocation, this was our student speaker at Convocation, and this is the quote that he ended his speech with, um, and just sort of a reminder of the internal influence that education really does have on everyone.
Um, well, you've already seen the, the quote, uh, we wanted to end with this quote from Henry Adams, and you can read that about the effects are, the effect is eternity, you can never tell how the influence stops, and so that's what we're trying to do, is to pass on our influence to the teachers, and then they can then pass it on to the students. So, we're working very hard to help enhance, again, what the teachers are already doing a great job in the classrooms, we're there as the, as the support. We'd like to thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity to present our information to you, and, uh, so thank you, and are there any questions?
Yes, I just, um, have a, a quick question, and thank you for what you guys are doing, and, uh, appreciate what you're doing. In terms of, uh, assessment, when you go to the classroom, are you just working with the lead teachers or everywhere?
We're working with all the teachers, with, uh, no matter what, how long they've been in the system, so each of us works in our particular subject area, so we go and we try to hit all the secondary teachers, all the middle school and high school teachers. Uh, there is no particular focus on any one teacher, we, we go to try to support all.
I have a question, uh, when you say that you're seeing progress, what type of progress are you seeing?
Well, we have some data that we are getting back now, um, they're, as far as English Language Arts, they're in their second benchmark for the semester in English Two, so we're seeing some, um, positive trends. We're just seeing really the, um, acceptance and buy-in to the program and having coaches back, that's a huge thing, um, our participation in PLCs and them asking for more and more resources and being open about that, that's huge. Also, um, we can see evidence in lesson planning and hearing from the principals as well, so, different things going on in lesson planning and excitement, that's huge, so.
Okay, thank you.
The alignment of those benchmarks is really helpful for the data, though.
Thank you.
I guess the, the one thing that I've always looked at is the tracking from element, the primary to middle, middle to high. Um, to what extent are y-you guys working to develop that bridging from level to level and so forth, from moving students from fifth grade to sixth grade, because it seems like our, uh, proficiency declines in middle school, and it doesn't really recover from that slide in the secondary? Or is that in your realm of, have you been tasked with that fun?
Um, well, we're, we're all working together, um, and that's, that's one of the things, the new, um, textbook, um, print adoptions that we have at McGraw-Hill, that is, um, grade one through eight for math, so it's going to be a huge bridge that you used to talk about, especially in the math level, because the kids are going to see the same type of materials.
Right.
As they go from grade to grade, and that's going to help raise, um, their, our expectations and their expectations and everything, all the way across the board in math. Um, so, to me, that's like one of the biggest things to help bridge.
Yeah, that scaffolding, it just continues through.
And if I may, may add to that, um, I think, I think, um, Carol previously serving as, uh, Director of, um, K-five, now oversees sort of that whole accountability piece, so I think it's a better blend, uh, being organized that way.
Less splintering of oversight.
Better alignment, um, better vertical alignment, uh, in relation to that.
We also have our Assistant Superintendent for K-twelve Curriculum Instruction, and then at secondary level, but we're all kind of working together, um, for literacy, we have Dr. Warren for secondary, but we're actually looking at re-organizing the framework for literacy, and that would be something that's district-wide. Um, we know that there's a big hurdle between fifth and sixth grade, but also a huge hurdle between eighth and ninth grade, so looking at students, um, and what they need for their summer, what do they need, um, as far as getting ready organizationally, and all the soft skills that they need to be successful, um, is huge. So, the interactive notebook I mentioned, using common language instructional practices, um, from some research-based, um, ideas and, and curriculum planning, that's going to be really key, so the kids get a constant message.
I was wondering if there was a gap in the curriculum that hadn't been addressed, or if it was a, a lack of vocabulary that, and I know that's been one of the things Avid is continuing to address, is the academic vocabulary. I teach at the community college level, and people don't understand the difference between admission and registration, you know, it's, it's the vocabulary, it becomes a hurdle, so.
I just have a statement, not so much a question, but, um, as I go around to the different schools this semester and been visiting and talking to people in the district, I, I definitely get, uh, um, I know that alignment, as you said, has been a huge thing, and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about you as lead teachers going around and helping the teachers throughout the district, and I keep hearing over and over again that, you know, it's been great having you as a resource to help them, and very positive things, and I'm excited, uh, about the energy that I'm seeing throughout the district as we go into this school year, and as we move forward with our plans that we have as a district, you know, our growth plans, but also as a school improvement plans, and there's just a lot of positive energy, and I really feel that, and so I'm just excited about everything kind of coming together this way, so, I'm, I'm very optimistic.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Great job. Dr. Smith, that concludes my, uh, my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan, and, uh, from the board, uh, I, I think the energy, uh, that Mrs. Brogan spoke of is, is obvious and palpable in our school system, and thank you for, for what you bring to us on a daily basis. Uh, I'd like to now continue with our committee reports, uh, curriculum instruction, Mrs. Brogan, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, we had one meeting since our last Board of Education meeting, one curriculum instruction meeting, and that was on the high school level at Lee Early College. Uh, we met last Wednesday, and we went over the school improvement plans that are on the consent agenda, and we talked about, um, the different plans for the different schools. Uh, Lee Early College, theirs was a three-year plan, and they've been plugging along over the last couple of years on their plan, and they've been making, um, tweaking and changing things as needed over time. And also, Southern Lee's was a two-year plan, and they're in their second year of their plan, and the same thing, they've been really evaluating their plans and changing it as needed as, as time goes on, and seeing what's working, what's not working. One thing I really gathered from, um, that meeting was that they really seem to be on top of their school improvement plans, they're really keeping a close eye on them and using them as a guide as they go throughout the school year, and they really are, um, kind of using that to help monitor how they're doing. So, I know a lot of effort goes into the school improvement plans, and I, I do want to draw everyone's attention to it, it's on the consent agenda, and for those of you out in the public, um, it's right there, you can get on the website and look at it, all the school improvement plans are on there, and I would encourage you to do so if you're, if you're in, out there. And I would encourage you to do so, if you're, if you're in, out there in the public, to look at them or in the school system, because a lot of time and effort goes into those plans, they put a lot of work into them, and they really are a framework for how they want to, the school to progress and grow throughout the year. And so I, I'm very impressed with the plans that I've seen through the elementary, middle, and high school level. I feel like they, every school has their own challenges and their own strengths, and their school improvement plans, you know, work with that, and they, they all put that together very nicely in their school improvement plans for each individual school. So that, that's very interesting to see how each school's different, they address all of that, they work very hard on that, and I'm excited to see as the school year goes on, how those plans proceed throughout the year, and, and, and things that they need to make changes with and how it's going. So I'm excited to see that go forward. So I just want to draw everyone's attention to that on the consent agenda, and I'm really happy about the school improvement plans, very proud, and thank you for all the hard work out there to everyone in the district on those. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. Let's continue with facilities and technology, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last meeting was November twenty-fourth, where we went over the five-year state facility needs survey, and we have Mr. Andrew LaRoe here tonight to go over some of the things that we talked about, and I think Miss Brogan agreed with me, that was a, it was a great, a great thing to allow our chair and other folks to do other things while-
Right.
You know, while this gentleman did-
That's correct. It's very time-consuming, so you're right, Cameron, very time-consuming, and I'm glad that we were able to do that.
And he'll be speaking with, with us shortly, and our next facilities meeting is December seventh.
The, the only sad part about the FNT committee report is I see that we're putting in three more modular units for our students. It's depressing that, you know, at this point in time, well, it's not, it's good to be growing, but it's sad to see them in modular units. And certainly, the talk of a new elementary school is in, in our short, short-term future. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Let's continue with finance, Mr. Akonoshu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, we not made a game in November, our next meeting will be in January, because we have all the budget things, you know, right now, there are some things to be, to be financed, so we're taking it, so we're not moved until January or twenty-eight. So we have a brief line business.
Thank you, Mr. Akonoshu. Let's continue with the policy committee, Mrs. Bowen.
The policy committee did not meet in November, however, we will have twenty-eight policies on for second reading this evening, and we will meet next week, December fifteenth, and it'll be a fun, another thirty policies to go through.
And a big thank you to all our committee chairman and, and members for your hard work, it's not seen, but we could, we couldn't do what we do without your work. Having said that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion concerning the, the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The consent agenda is approved, and we can now continue with unfinished business, and this will be a second reading for board policies, Mrs. Bowen, please.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the second reading of policy numbers thirteen-ten slash forty-oh-two, thirteen-twenty slash thirty-five-sixty, seventeen-ten slash forty-twenty slash seventy-two-thirty, seventy, seventeen-forty-two slash fifty-sixty, twenty-three-oh-two, twenty-five-hundred, thirty-three-twenty, thirty-four-oh-five, thirty-four-twenty, thirty-four-sixty, thirty-four-seventy slash four-three-oh-two R, forty-three-oh-three, forty-three-twenty, forty-three-thirty-five, fifty-twenty-two, fifty-twenty-six slash seventy-two-fifty, fifty-twenty-seven slash seventy-two-seventy-five, fifty-thirty, sixty-three-oh-five, sixty-three-fifteen, sixty-five-fifty, seventy-five-hundred, seventy-seven-thirty, seventy-nine-fifty, ninety-ten, ninety-twenty, ninety-one-ten, and ninety-four-hundred.
Thank you for that list.
Thank you.
And I would like to correct one thing, in the, in the written motion, it says first reading, and this obviously is second reading.
This is second reading.
So let's make sure we understand that, that we're voting on a second reading of these policies. The motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the policies before us? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the second reading of these policies is approved. We can now continue our meeting with new business. The next item is the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen calendars, Mrs. Spence and Mr. Dietrich.
Members of the board, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to share with you another great calendar committee year that we had. As you know, in this district, the calendar committee forms every year with representatives from each school, central office, all the departments, parents, and in some cases, we've had students on there even. So it, it, it's a good mix of everyone in the district. That committee meets, is given a draft calendar, and then through the draft calendar, discussion ensues, changes are made based on the conversation, and then finally, it gets to the approval we are bringing now, which is a recommendation to you, which you should have, of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen committee. I want to thank the committee members for their hard work, because this calendar does meet all the obligations that are set forth to us by the state of North Carolina, and therefore, again, thank their hard work, and we recommend this calendar to you.
Are there any questions concerning the calendar?
Is eight November election day, is that why it's on there?
Yes, ma'am.
Because there were two holidays of that week, and that's why.
Yes, ma'am, the eighth is a voting day, and the eleventh is Veterans Day.
Okay.
Any further questions? In, in that case, is there a motion to approve the, the traditional calendar on first reading for two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The traditional calendar is approved on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under new business is our five-year state facility needs survey. Mr. Sharp and Mr. LaRoe, if you would present that report for us, please.
Mr. Sharp, would you mind if Dr. Atkinson comes forward as well during this presentation? No, for Dr. Atkinson, come forward as well.
Good evening again. I'd like to introduce to you tonight Mr. Andrew LaRoe, he's with the Basic Company, Building Asset Inventory Single Component System. His company has been contracted to survey the school system, our school system, interview our staff, and complete the five-year facility needs study that is submitted to our Department of Public Instruction. This is required by state statute, and every five years, we have to do this report and send this information in, completed on the CD form that they have sent to us. In this study, we provide information to the State Department regarding the needs of the school system across the state. He also provides for us some assistance in our budgetary process that will help us. He interviewed all of our principals, our maintenance staff, he spent sixty-plus hours with our staff in discussing, also has done compiled some notebooks, so our information now should be complete. So at this time, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Andrew LaRoe.
This is the point where everything falls on the floor. And I see the PowerPoint in front of me, now I see it up there. Well, it's a pleasure to be here, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about this work, and get a chance to kind of share with you a little bit some of the things that, that we learned while we were working with your staff in the preparation of this report. As Dr. Atkinson explained, this is a report that Department of Public Instruction, School Planning, requires to be filled out every five years. We started doing these in nineteen eighty-eight, I did the first one in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools in eighty-eight, and did the last one in two thousand and ten in Guilford County Schools, where I was their chief operations officer and retired, and I liked doing this so well, I just went out and got, got a few more to do this year. So we, we helped seven school districts work on this report, and it's been, it's been quite a, quite, quite a thing to look at the differences between school districts, because we, we did, we did Burke and Caldwell and Lincoln, some of the ones that are up in the mountains, and, and Hope County, we're doing Du Plan, and just a lot of variation, and, and it's fun to kind of watch the information come in that way. You're looking at a, a table that shows their, the previous submissions over the last four cycles, fourth one being this one in particular that's marked in yellow, so you can kind of get a quick look at where the, the cost fell in comparison to what has been submitted by Lee County in, in the past. It's not a lot that you can gain from that, other than just kind of looking back and, and seeing, you know, some consistency, and you can probably look back and see where new construction was, was a bigger issue, and of course, in the last cycle, that, that obviously wasn't the case. You can see a growing need for renovations, and I can tell you across the board that that's something we saw in every district, was just, you know, over the past four cycles, that renovation costs are going up, and, and school buildings just aren't getting any newer, there's a lot of things, a lot of money that we have to put into them. Lighten up my touch up there a little bit. You have a handout in front of you that's an executive summary that this presentation kind of follows along with. One of the things that we just wanted to be clear about was our methodology for, for assisting your staff in putting this report together. We followed a process that we use across the state, we're working very closely with the people in DPI that put this, put this thing together. Their forms are, they're not impossible to figure out, but they're, they're kind of complex, and we have to kind of make a few phone calls on your behalf to say, can you take the information this way, or, or work another way? And not, they, they have also done a few revisions of the, of their, of their forms while we've been, while I've been working on it, to make them better. We come in and do a setup process where we, we collect as much information as we can, you had a lot of information, there were some districts that we didn't have as much to work with, you had, you were able to give us most of the information that we needed, and we kind of worked with your staff to kind of get to the rest of it. When we do the setup process, we identify the people that we want to interview, we try to, we, we really focus on the maintenance department, it's our very strong belief, and I think it shows up, that the people that know the most about your buildings are the people that work underneath them and on top of them, and in the middle of the weekend, and, and have a lot of knowledge of that. And this will be the first time, and it won't be the last time, that I'll say, what a wonderful maintenance director you have. Mr. Pittman is outstanding, he's got a wonderful staff, they came into this thing wholehearted, they, they wanted to help us as much as they could to get the information. And we, we, when we conduct the interviews with the staff, we have a process, it's a little bit grueling, we go through a lot of details, and we pull a lot of information out that we might not have gotten otherwise. In this, in, in Lee County Schools, we also interviewed principals, it was a request from your superintendent, that while we're at this and following this process, it made perfect sense to ask the principals to come in, and from, from a budget preparation perspective, it gives you a good, a good chance at getting information for your capital outlay budget. We've all totaled in the reports that we put together from what we received from the principals, it was about eight-point-five million dollars worth of the kind of projects that we, we expect to hear from principals, the things that touch them more often. Drainage was a big issue, you know, issues where there's maybe walking tracks or something that have eroded and that need to be repaired. Certainly, a lot of the, the building systems inside of the school with cameras and phone systems, and a lot of the, the equipment that's inside of the building that they had concerns about. When we finish up, we, all of our information, we go back to our office, we have a, a few people that will take that information and start putting it into an organized report, we do a lot of analysis. We come back in about a week, we sat down with Dr. Atkinson and Mr. Pittman, and went over all of our results. We look for mistakes, we've got a lot of quality control processes in place, we don't get them all, we look for them, we keep looking for them, it's a lot of data, but we try very best to, to make sure that we don't have anything that's in there that's incorrect. We just recently, we went back, made some changes, revisions, we come back for a final review, we met with your board committee, I believe it's Facilities and Technology, FNT, and, and went through a final review of the reports. Even there, we, we were questioning, we wanted to make sure that we've got things like, like you want it. At that point, we begin to finalize everything into the state forms, getting it ready to ship off to the state. And we, we're at that point now, we've got, we've got just a couple little small things that we're working on to correct, but we, we're at a point where we can, we can send this report in. Wanted to mention that there's, the, you have the executive summaries, the staff has an enormous amount of information. They have everything that we input into the state forms, which is sometimes a little incomprehensible because of the way that it's set up, but we back that up with a second notebook that we call the Basic workbook, and it has all of our spreadsheets in it, and it, you can go from the very top number all the way down per school, per, you know, category of, of expenses, right down to the, the actual project. And we try to put some information in there about the location of those projects. When we interviewed, we asked people to prioritize A, B, or C. The state forms only look at years oh through five and six through ten. They call it a five-year report, but it's really two five-year reports. We break up that first one, oh through, oh through five, to be a one through two and a three through five. One of the things that we're trying to do is analyze, what, what do your maintenance people and what do your staff believe is something that has to be done right away, or in the next one to two years? I want to tell you that in this district, it was the lowest percentage that we saw in any of our districts. Typically, we saw, we saw a lot of money up, up in that area, in fact, let me just turn to that report pretty quickly and tell you that in prioritization, priority A was seven hundred and, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand, priority B being twenty million, and then things in years six through ten were five, five-point-five million. That's a good signal. I hope that you can recognize the fact that there's, there's not a lot of things that people are feeling like we've got to rush out very quickly and, and fix roofs that are leaking and borders that aren't working, and, you know, your, your, your maintenance department is doing a good job, and I think you're doing a good job in your, in your capital planning as well. We, we had a lot of districts that had, the average age of their schools was like fifty years old or something, and they had a lot of nineteen-twenty schools, and it was just very difficult to, to keep those going. Looking at your call summary, the, the state forms, the state report is, is really only interested in instructional space. So you'll see in years one through five, it's seventy-five million, five-hundred-and-four-thousand-eighty-three dollars, and you'll, you'll see in a moment that that, that includes your, your new elementary schools, new auditorium, new gymnasium, so there's quite a bit of construction cost that's wrapped into that number. Year six through ten came to five-point-five million for a total of eighty-one million. Inside of our, outside of the state forms, we felt like if we're going to go through this process, then we should be looking at your non-instructional space as well. The state forms, we're not interested in it, but with, with asking questions about work that needed to be done, like there's a very large drain, underground drainage project, project to be done at this building at some point. There's asbestos removal at Jamesboro, there's, there's some, some projects that need to be included in this, so they totaled eight-hundred-and-eighty- So they totaled eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, bringing the total up to eighty-one million nine hundred and five thousand. So, um, we can get a little more detail on that, but I want to talk a little bit about the, the new construction. We worked with, uh, your architect, Jimmy Height, um, had several, um, conference calls with him to, to make sure that we were, uh, in line with the information that he's already, uh, provided to the board for two new elementary schools. And we had to kind of look at that very closely, um, because one of, one of the elementary schools requires land and we, we have that, we, we calculate the cost for these through the state work, uh, the, the budget, the construction budget worksheets that are embedded in the state forms. Uh, they don't give you a lot of play with that. They, you put in square footage and you fill in the blanks on a few questions. It calculates, uh, cost per square foot and some of the other issues, like if, if there needs to be a demolition and that type of thing, uh, at a hundred and ninety-four dollars a square foot currently. The, um, the, the, uh, I guess that's the noise you're used to hearing, right? If all you get up and run, I'm going with you. But, um, the, the, the calculation that they make is at a hundred and ninety-four dollars a square foot. So, so you'll see, um, in your executive summary, I think it's on page seven. And we tried to write the executive summary in just a text, uh, kind of a platform so that you would be able to, um, without getting way down into some of the details, but certainly at an executive level. The two new schools come in at forty-one million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand. And I stress to you as we talk about this, that this is, for planning purposes, the state puts this worksheet together so people can get to a really basic cost for a new construction. Once you have an architect, you get drilled in and tuned in a lot closer to where your numbers are at. And my conversations with, um, Mr. Height, um, he felt like, you know, that, that, that the numbers that were showing up on the state forms were safe numbers for us to, to be working with at this point in time. And then as he, he explained to me that there are some, you know, certainly with some auditorium renovations and some things that'll have to take place, that the, the state forms just do not take that into account. But, so we get to the, and we named them for you. I don't know if those names will stick or not. We call them the first new elementary school and the second new elementary school. I hope they don't stick. And so the first one, um, is, is larger in capacity. At one point in time, we had that at the same capacity and we had to, we had to make a correction and bring that up from seven hundred to nine hundred and, and the corresponding square footage was a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and ten thousand square feet. So the cost came in at, at, uh, twenty-three, six eighty-seven. And the, the state forms automatically calculate furniture and equipment. So it automatically puts into a furniture column for the whole report, um, any furniture and equipment that'll be needed for new construction. So that came in a little over two million dollars, bringing the total cost for that school to twenty-five million, seven hundred, roughly seven hundred and sixty thousand. So, um, the, well, and then the second, the second elementary, uh, was at eight, the original eighty-three thousand square feet with a capacity of seven hundred. Um, it came at almost eighteen million, um, with, uh, a couple of million added in for furniture and equipment, bringing it to a total of twenty-one point five. So it's, it's unusual, um, that we find ourselves in a circumstance where you've got two projects that, that are, you know, that are in the planning stages like this and we, we, we have to be really careful with this so that the numbers that, that state's calculating are not widely different than, than what you have. And if they are, then we, we need to have a good explanation for it. The additions that, that show up in the, uh, report, um, totaled, uh, right at six million dollars. There's a new gymnasium, um, at approximately three million at Brack Street Academy that I'm sure you're very aware of, and a, um, a three point five million dollar project for an auditorium renovation at, at Southern Lee High School. And there's a category in there for land and it's very broad. You had a, uh, approximately a two million dollar budget and we could tune the state forms in to about one point nine fifty to, to get it close enough on a per acreage cost. And I, and I should say that furniture and equipment was the big thing for us. We, we, beyond what the construction had in it, we, we actually questioned your, your staff, um, the appropriate folks that what, what's needed out in the schools and classroom replacements, media center furniture, um, administrative furniture, cafeteria tables, and, uh, their total on that was eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And, and most of that was, was in years three through five. We also had your child nutrition people come in and we, we questioned them a lot about refrigeration, about walk-in coolers, about the condition of the serving lines and cooking equipment, and their total came in at roughly four hundred thousand. For, and most of that also was in years three through five. We, in, in your executive summary, you see a breakdown of, of the, the total renovation cost inside of this larger budget, um, including, um, that, that twenty-six point eight million is all of your instructional, your non-instructional together. It's also, um, the state in its forms, um, adds four and a half percent contingency to all of these numbers that, that were put into the system and it adds seven and a half percent, um, a percentage for administrative and design fees. So, so when you see these numbers, they've, they've been loaded, as we say, with, with these, uh, additional factors, which is not a bad thing to do. Contingency's not a bad thing when you're, when you're trying to come up with a budget for some of these projects. So you can see the, you know, how the, how this breaks up, you can, you can quickly see most of the time that HVAC takes the, the largest amount, but there's a lot of athletic projects that showed up in your, your other category that drove that one up to a much larger size. If you want to look at, we don't, it's not a perfect process, but we, inside of your, your executive summaries, we went through each one of those categories and tried to pull out for you some of the more significant groups of projects so that you could kind of see where is that going, so that you could see that, you know, roofing projects are taking, I think roofing has primarily taken place in elementary, so I better, I better look when I say something like that. Yeah, the approximate cost of three point two million, twenty-five percent of the elementary schools and one high school project. And, um, some of these numbers are very approximate. We just go through the entire report and try to pull out as much as we can and, and kind of give you a good idea of where some of the money is going. I found a mistake. I'd like to apologize for it and, and tell you what it is so that you can, uh, you can be aware of it. Under, under building exterior, you'll see, uh, window replacements and underneath it it says four point seven million and that's incorrect. That's a mistake. There is, in, in that category, there is a, um, there is a window replacement project of one point eight million at East, East Lee Middle. And there, and at two middle schools, there's a million dollars in exterior door replacement. And of course that adds up to two point eight, not four point seven. So we'll correct that in our original documents and once again, I apologize for that. I think that I've already mentioned about the principal interviews. You can't really see that too close. I don't think we, 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 it's, it all totals up to eight point five million. We took the principals through the same process that we took the rest of the staff through. So we walked down through site improvements, building exterior, building interior, which mirrors what's in the state forms. And it gave them a good platform to really think about some things that they, that they had not, that they had not thought of before. And that, I believe concludes what I had prepared to talk about and I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
I was trying to write down your numbers when you disaggregated the zero, uh, year zero through year five. You specifically broke those out, O to two and three to five and gave numbers and I didn't catch them quickly enough.
That's okay.
If I could get those numbers again, I'd appreciate it.
And it's, um, and, and, and this is in the prioritization, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so. Get up there where I can talk and read at the same time. The, the priority A, which is years one through two totaled seven four nine five five oh, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, got it.
Priority B, years three through five totaled twenty million, six hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. And priority C, years six through 10 totaled five million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars. Five, five two eight zero eight eight.
Got it.
And that totals two six eight eight three eight two two. Twenty-six million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Any other questions on Mr. Mr. LaRoe?
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this. There's a lot of information and you did a great job, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you and it was, it was a pleasure working with your staff. They, they really, really accommodated us very well.
As you, uh, thank you for watching. As you compare, uh, and look at our numbers, how do we, uh, how do you see us, uh, I know doing this, you have a little bit of, uh, looking at our performance in, or?
It's subjective, so it, it, you know, there's not, I don't have a thorough analysis of it, but we, we've had discussions amongst ourselves because we, we do have a lot of data. We're trying to figure out, what can we do with that data? You know, we got a lot of, a lot of information that we can compare and of course the state's doing the same thing with a hundred and fifteen schools. But of the ones that we looked at, um, the schools were, uh, newer in Lee County. They, you had a, you had a, a lot more newer schools and that, that was, that was helpful to you. We've got a, um, I think we've got a chart in your executive summary that this shows an average age of schools, uh, at, average is forty-two and then if you factor in that it's not always the, the first building that was built that you base that off of. It may be just a gym and there's a bigger building somewhere. So when we, when we reorder it, you know, the average age is thirty-nine. Thirty-nine is not bad for, for a lot of districts. The thing that I noticed the most, uh, and certainly working with Mr. Pittman, is that you've completed your initiatives. A lot of districts get started with cameras or they get started with some safety issues or they get started with, you know, a lighting retrofit or putting HVAC controls in. And they get it halfway through it and something happens, leadership changes, the, the funding is not the same as it was and they can't get to all the schools. And so they're always kind of playing catch-up. But this district does an amazing job of really seeing it all the way through and I think you can be proud of that. You, you're, things didn't show up. HVAC controls was not, it was upgrading what you already have, but getting them installed was an, was an issue. You got cameras, you know, it's now just upgrading and, and adding more to it. A lot of your technology was that way. So I think that's the biggest thing that we could see is, as a difference.
One more thing, I, I'm gonna appreciate, I appreciate you coming by and giving this presentation because I know me and Ms. Brogan sure are gonna have to go through.
This was the condensed version of what you all mean.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, we appreciate it. This is, the board appreciates it and we'll look forward to using this information in our upcoming budget.
Absolutely.
That's right, that's right.
Any other questions?
I do, I do have one other thing that I'd like you to speculate on, uh, on the very last page, uh, the utilities cost you quote is a dollar and forty-five cents per square foot. How, how does that measure up?
A school district with, across the state, it, it varies a lot. The highest I've seen, I won't name the county in fairness to them, they're at a two dollars and forty-seven cents a square foot.
Wow.
It's really high. It's, it's ridiculously high. We had, um, a school district that I will name, Burke County, at ninety-eight cents a square foot. They have an energy manager in place. They've had an energy program going for a long time and they've really tuned it in. And they, and so if you fall somewhere in the dollar ten to, I would say, dollar thirty, forty range, you're gonna fall in a pretty normal area. When the state takes all of these and they look for a mean, you're probably gonna find about a dollar forty for a mean. So you, you, you won't be embarrassed.
Right.
But what you will be is looking for, there, there's some opportunity there.
For savings.
A dollar ten's a good goal. So if you want to do some math in front of you right now, and I'll get you there quicker, but it's, if you, if you go back and multiply your total square footage times a dollar ten, you'll find that that's about a half a million dollar savings. So if you could get from a dollar forty-six to a dollar ten, which is a very reasonable place to be, and, and realize this, it's not about sacrificing comfort and safety, particularly in the operational day. Any energy program that says, let's turn off all the lights and turn the heat off, well, what are we doing that for? We have it there to, for, for the learning environment. Your savings are when the buildings are unoccupied. That's where you'll find that difference between a dollar forty and a dollar ten is where, where things are running that shouldn't be running or, or whatever during holidays and weekends and nighttime. So I think you compare okay.
Good. Well, on behalf of the board, we certainly appreciate your expertise and, uh, bringing us good, good figures for our CIP budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we have one last, last item, uh, on our new business.
Mr. Chairman? We need to make a motion on the survey before you get into the next item.
Do we?
For the facilities.
In that case, is there a, uh, is there a motion to approve the, uh, Lee County Facility Need Survey? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The, the needs, uh, facility need survey is approved. The last item on our new business agenda, uh, involves the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. And this memo comes from them. The North Carolina School Board Association's Board of Directors is inviting each local school board to nominate one of its members to serve on the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. Each board is invited to nominate one board member to serve on the committee. The, the individual, uh, individual should be nominated through a vote of the full board taking an open session. And I might add that Mrs. Brogan served on this committee last year and she has indicated a, uh, an interest in, in continuing on that committee. And, uh, we certainly be open, if anybody else is interested, uh, now's the time to speak up and if not, uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to nominate, uh, Mrs. Brogan. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate, uh, Mrs. Brogan to the Legislative Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Congratulations on your new job.
Thank you.
Was I to understand that was a nomination and that there's like a competitive, cause you won, you won your seat on that.
They, they will pick.
They, you put in an app.
From all, all one hundred and ten counties.
Right, right. You put in an application process, like this is the first step, then we send it up to them and then they, they choose the committee and I, it's a two-year term and mine expires this month.
Gotcha.
So.
Very neat.
We assume they have a good sense to put her back on there.
That's right.
Uh, Mr. Akonosho, if you would like to, uh, make a motion for closed session, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Lee County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not in public, record order, NCGS, I want four three three eight three one eight, that, that will be, and that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, uh, go into closed session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion approves. We will continue with, uh, closed session, please. We will continue with closed session, please.
Well, if you get a chance, get your chair warmed up.
Yes, yes ma'am. Is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Report?
I move that we approve the Human Resources Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Human Resources Report is, is approved. And Mr. Akonosho, if you'll make another motion, we will go back for the second portion of our closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not republiq, under NCGS, section one four three, period eight, dot eleven, bracket eight.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. We'll go back for the second portion of our closed session motion.